Meeting Monday, August 14, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street, Whitfield, Virginia. We do have a quorum. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Kathy Patterson.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next, we need to have an approval of the agenda. And for that, I will need a motion, please.
Madam, mayor, before we approve the agenda, I would like to make a motion to amend to include items under the closed meeting. On item E to discuss salaries and performance of appointed employees, I also would like to request at this time that this be a council-only discussion. That way that employees are not made to feel uncomfortable or put on the spot. So I would like to add that to our closed meeting agenda for tonight, please.
I think you lost me in there. So we are amending the closed agenda?
Yes, the closed, yes, please.
And A, B, C, which one are you amending?
D.
D?
I would like to add along item E. To discuss the salaries and performance of appointed employees, I also request that this be a council-only discussion. That way our appointed employees are not put on the spot or made to feel uncomfortable. So I would like for council to discuss our appointed employees in a closed meeting. I think that will be fair to them.
So can our attorney sit in with that?
Absolutely, you can.
All right, so I will need a motion for, let's see, I guess we need to vote on that first. All right, so I'm going to need, I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
So I need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, here none. Let's do a roll call vote, please. Start with Ms. Mayor Patterson.
Patterson, yes.
Taylor, yes.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right. That is now part of the agenda. So at this point, I would like to approve, would like to have approval of the agenda to include the added portion. Do I need a motion?
I'll say with you.
Do we have a motion?
For the approval of the agenda?
The amended agenda.
Yes, I so move.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I hear none. All in favor? Again, a roll call vote. Let's start with Ms. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
All right. The agenda has been moved. Just FYI, we can adjourn at 6:00 PM if need be for a recess. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes one item, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of July 24, 2023. I will need a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 24.
All right, a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, here are none. All in favor, signify by aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? Make that motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation to Town Council, presentation by Downtown Whitfield Incorporated, Secretary of Director Todd Wolfert regarding the facade program. Mr. Wolfert, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I can come over there if you want us to. Can we all see it?
There we would, definitely. I think it was moving.
So thank you guys for having me. Just want to update you all on, I was here some time ago to discuss the revamped version of the Todd program. So what you see on the screen here, we all designed, this was implemented probably for six years, how you see it here. So back in the day, Brian and I definitely did the program collectively together. But in revamping this, we wanted to make it more visually appealing and user-friendly as folks would sign up and understand some of the rules and regulations of the program. So I'm just going to run through this real quick, and I'm glad to answer any questions as we go or at the end. But the facade program is basically an incentive for Downtown Whitfield and the Main Street that you see up in the left there. So the general provisions of the program are basically, we're trying to preserve restored fabric of downtown buildings, and that's the major goal of the program. So we will begin to work through with any property owner that wants to be a part of that. The construction contract portion, so the property owner will be working with a contractor on their own. The town or Downtown Whitfield will not get any of that agreement. We will help them with the renderings of things that you see later. And then the town will reimburse basically after what we're proposing tonight, after Downtown Whitfield looks at the project to make sure it fits the rendering that Fraser and Associates from State of Virginia, that's who we use to do the professional renderings. So again, we'll be working on the ground with folks to navigate through the program. And you can see some of the photos on the bottom there. That's JoJo's Addict. They were part of the facade improvement program and the sign incentive program. So that's what it looked like prior to the updating of the facade. And again, we worked with architects upstate Virginia for the Main Street. So what you see on page four there to the right is basically kind of an interest form. So that helps us understand what level they want to do the program. Because our architects will render it out based on the level that they're willing to spend. So we don't want our architects to render something out that's $100,000 if you're only going to spend, you know, 15 or 20. So these are what we show folks to, this is what the architect needs. So we need to make sure that we get the appropriate pictures so that the architects can render it to scale. And then based off when they render it to scale, they'll give that to their contractor. So these are just documents asking for the property owner to take the appropriate pictures that they need. And these are some of the rendering. So this is the old Baldwin's building, which you see on Main Street. This is what it starts out. And again, this is a free service to Virginia Main Street designated for communities which we are. So we start out with pictures. We look for historic pictures so they can appropriately render the project. But this is what we start out with, and they show several schematics on what it could be, and again, based on what the project or what's the name of the project. So these are some of the schematics that hopefully the Baldwin's building folks will take advantage of at some point. And again, this is kind of like, if we have a third-party contract that Downtown Whitfield, the town Whitfield property owner will enter into, that basically makes sure they follow the rendering which you just saw. So that contract will basically state, they will render this project as you see it here, and then we'll come out and make sure it's done that way. And then that's when we, the town will get reimbursed for the project. That is a very quick run-through of the program because I feel like I've been here before and kind of talked about this. So I don't want to continue to repeat myself on some of the stuff. But I'll be glad to take any questions about the program, about the revamped version of the program. Right now, we have a couple that are interested to be a part of the program, about four folks, property owners of downtown. And so we just want to be able to re-implement the new version of the program to that extent.
So Todd, do we have a certain amount of spaces, if you will, of people that we can accept into the program? Because I know way back when we-
Yeah. So it's my understanding that it's been budgeted $75,000. So that could take up, you know, each project is up to $15,000. So not all of them will go that high, and some of them, but we can only reimburse up to $25,000. That's right. So even if they spend $45,000, we only reimburse up to $25,000. If they spend $5,000, we reimburse them $5,000. That's a one-to-one matching.
$25,000.
One-to-one matching, great. This is just the new version. So the old version was just literally a text document. We've taken this and trying to visually help people understand what they're doing. It helps us explain it better when we're on the ground. But we're eager to get out and get the program going again. We have to, we'll be able to do that. But again, we want to administer Downtown Whitfield, administer the program because Brian doesn't have the time, Lane doesn't have the time to administer the program. So we're working one-on-one with these folks already. So we feel that we have the time and capacity to do that.
Can you just mention the footprint of the program for people out there that might not realize that it's not all of Whitfield?
Yeah, so it's B2 Downtown District. It's what you see here. I know that graphic doesn't show too much, but it's from 12th Street to 11th Street, springing to the right. So that's the program, and I shall be glad to answer any questions here or after the fact. I know Mr. Gillen's not here tonight, but-
I do have a question, Mr. Wolfert. What if you say if you had like 10 people to apply? How do you do that? Do you do like first come, first served? Is it like a lotto or?
It'd be first come, first served.
Okay.
Yeah. Up till the budget's extended. Yeah. And then there will be a lot of following year if council allocates it.
So does everybody know that this is a possibility by chance? Or is it just something that you are going to announce?
Everybody, the folks that are in the program or not in the program, interested in the program, know that it's a possibility. So they're eager to, for us to kind of say, yeah.
So like everybody knows, just not the four, and then we'll let other people know. Everybody knows it has opportunity, is that correct?
Yeah, once, yeah. Once we get blessing program right here, we'll announce it, programs, the new version, the revamped version is on. We're going to talk to folks that are interested. We just know that the four people kind of very interested. That two of those have renderings from our architects already.
I think just to clarify things, just to make sure that her questions being answered, is everybody in the footprint, do they know of the program?
They know of the program. They don't know of the revamped version. The nuts and bolts are still the same about the program. It's just, it's just really a visual thing for folks to understand. It helps me bring it to life when I'm talking about it to somebody like this. Like, for example, when I show the renderings, this is what you're going to get. I'm able to show them the level of detail they're defending. And I'm also able to show them how it brings your building to life and other examples of the JoJo's Addict that you mentioned up here on the bottom. I'm just able to visually bring it to life with folks. And I think that goes a long way, or it has.
I guess my question is, I'm sorry, and I hate to keep asking, but I just want to make sure for myself I'm clear. Say, for instance, the four, if they have their, if we give the blessing, say, tonight or next week or two weeks, and then the other people, will they have an opportunity and enough time? Or do the other four, and they kind of give your thanks tomorrow? How is that? I guess that's how, what I'm trying to ask.
So as soon as we, I'm trying to answer the best thing. So as soon as we announce the program-
Yes, sir.
-we'll announce it to everybody. And those four will have to sign up. So it's really, it's a first come, first served thing. Those four know they want to do it, they're kind of waiting on the program potentially to re-announce. But we'll announce it to everybody, and it'll be up to those four to kind of sign up.
Go ahead, okay.
So it's kind of, we want it to be a level playing field for everybody.
Right. Well, thank you.
We just know that there's some folks out there that are ready to roll probably more closely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolfert.
One thing I want to mention here, this last little slide here, we're going to be working with Virginia Tech Landscape and Architecture students on Monday, August 28, from 1:00 to 5:00. We'd like to invite Town Council and Town Administration staff to be a part of that process. So we're going to be working to render a green space parking park in the heart of downtown between the paperclip and the Baldwin's building. So we're going to be working with landscape architect students and grad students, and they're actually bringing their whole class down. And we're going to do a community information gathering session. And so we'll be inviting some business owners, some community stakeholders. We'd love Town Council to be a part of that. We're going to do some walking tour. Russell's going to do a presentation on the backstory of Downtown Whitfield and some of the, some of the things that we, you know, to do in the past. So we felt really good about that. Virginia Tech just did a community impact survey on July 4th, celebration event, which is very, very positive. So we'll continue to rely on that partnership with Virginia Tech. And it'll be a good experience for the students as well as a class project. So glad to see you guys there.
And if we show up, where do we go?
Come to our office. We'll start the presentation there, and then we'll do the walk. And we can give you more detailed schedule if you can only show up to a certain portion, can't be there the whole time. Probably something, walk until about 3:00.
So just real quickly, are you all, are you all, have you all seen, heard enough to bless the relaunch of the facade program as presented? Or do you want to hear more about it?
I personally wouldn't mind like having a hard copy of that where I could look at it. Like, if that's okay, okay. Thank you.
Being that I'm new to council, I wasn't here when you addressed it before.
Glad to answer any additional questions you have.
Thank you.
I'll get that information too. We'll get it connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is citizens' period, and we do have a couple people signed up to talk and going down the list here. The first person is Ms. Crockett? Or, there you go. George, Georgia, excuse me.
Sorry about that. You try to wipe that, sometimes it just doesn't-
It's just, you have some very pretty fancy writing. It's very nice.
I just wanted to revisit the issue of homelessness here in town. All of us throughout, you know, we'd like to think that there is no issue, but the last year and a half, it actually did come close up because there was a house that no longer exists that is, was next door to my home. And as daylight was ending, you'd have a slew of people going over, and naturally, curiosity automatic. But then I found out that the reason for that was most were bringing their little backpacks and duffel bags, and the little lady that was renting there was allowing them to come in for the night. That house has gone since then.
Good lord.
But then the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, I always thought that the apartment complexes here in town fell directly under the Housing Authority. And last year, found out that's not the case. Several of the complexes are actually managed by private companies, and their income cap falls approximately $10,000 less than the Housing Authority's. I don't know how that can be addressed, if it can be addressed. But when you've got a single family income of $30,000 or $35,000 and at least two other dependents and told that you're making too much to be eligible to live in one of those complexes, it's mind-boggling to me. So just wanted to give you that seed of thought. What I myself have seen and heard, many aren't real eager to come up and stand in front of people and say, hey, there is a need. There really, truly is a need. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crockett. Mr. Russell?
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to kind of share two different themes here echoing what Georgia had said about the need for more accessible housing. I just want to elaborate on some of the causal factors, or at least the numbers that indicate the causal factors. So I think most importantly, it's important to understand that around a quarter of renters in the United States are spending over 30% of their income on rent. An additional quarter are spending over 50% of their income on rent. So when you, when you start to break that down by income, the bottom 20% of income, the bottom 20% income bracket is spending 62.5% of their income on rent. So this high rent burden is a huge obstacle for some people to clear when they're struggling to make ends meet and trying to get into the lower levels of affordable housing. So I just wanted to share that that is a stressor for people looking for residence, right? Additionally, I wanted to share that rent prices have increased by 5% since 2022 across the nation. And I should specify that the statistics I was citing was from the U.S. Census Bureau. So they're not specific to Whitfield, but they are indicative of our nation at large. So additionally, from that data, rent prices are up 5% from 2022 across the nation. However, they are up 30.5%. That's 30.5% since 2019. I don't think everyone's house has gotten 30.5% nicer to live in since 2019, but it is a huge stressor on people trying to find a place to live. So having all those statistics and figures in our head, the latest data that was shared to us by Hope Ministries was that since July 1st of this year, they have had 270 people or I guess groups, families come, and they had to turn away 270 people because they could not, they could not house and place these folks. And I understand that they are waiting on some budgetary stuff like that. So I'm more commenting on the need, not any inability to fill that need. So 270 people were, they were unable to house them, of which slightly less than half, that's 119 folks, were truly homeless. Like, not just at risk, but were unhoused. A further breakdown of those statistics, when they asked the people to report what they would call home, they were stating that half of those folks, so 135 of those 270 turned away, were residents of Wood County. So I just wanted to highlight that that, that that need is local. And then the next couple counties were all ones touching Wood County. So that would be kind of disproving some of the statements that some of this is coming from, you know, across the country. A lot of these people are calling Southwest Virginia home. So those were the two sets of information, two pieces of information I want to share with the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And the next person who wishes to speak would be Carrington Crockett.
Just kind of going to piggyback off of what Andrew said. Whitfield, Virginia is like many other small towns across the nation to include having an issue of homeless or unhoused individuals. It has been said that the biggest population of our homeless issue are those traveling through our community. And speaking with many unhoused individuals, the Wood County Chapter of Virginia Organizing has found most of our unhoused individuals are in fact residents of Whitfield and Wood County. Regardless of a person's established residence, they still deserve shelter. Several months ago, Hope Incorporated presented information and asked for assistance in establishing a warming shelter for extremely cold weather. Their plea for assistance has been ignored by Whitfield's Town Council. Members of the community and Virginia Organizing stand today asking that our town come together to make sure that unhoused at least have a place to go, sleep, and have shelter during the cold winter months. We believe shelter is a basic need, and we want that for every individual in need that will accept it. Please, as decision-makers of our beautiful small town, work with us to bring this to reality. We challenge the council to work on establishing a warming shelter here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can only speak for myself, but I think council would agree that we did not just ignore the issue. But maybe, Carrington, maybe we could have some meetings with some people from Hope and our administration and representative to council to kind of talk about this some more instead of just that meetings like this, and maybe get some dialogue going and some passing back and forth of ideas. I mean, would y'all be interested in that, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Freeman, do you think we could be-
Sir?
Ms. Crockett aims, are you for Virginia organizing?
I know, but I'm not.
If you, I just would like to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, I'm for Virginia organizing, and we're not speaking on behalf of the ministry. We're speaking on behalf of the Virginia organizing.
Okay.
And we have had several conversations with some of the Town Council members at least.
Okay, so what I would like to see, I'm in agreement with the mayor, I would like to, for you all to, Mr. Freeman, to reach out to you all, still you all reaching out to us, I would like for him to reach out to you. And the director of Hope Ministries, which I believe is Mr. Andy Keglin. And let's schedule a meeting so that we can sit down and discuss your concerns. I don't know, you know, what all we can do or what, but I would like to hear any solutions that you all may have. I'm open to hearing what you have and certainly trying to figure out a way to come up with, you know, a solution to the problem. So I'm not, you know, closed to any suggestions. I would like for Mr. Freeman to reach out to you all and schedule a meeting, if that's okay with you.
And to correct our names, this Crockett, you, and Carrington, and myself.
Okay. Did I, I thought I called you Crockett.
No, it was just-
Okay. Ma'am Holston? Thank you.
That's all that signed up? Is there anybody else that would like to speak to council this evening? Would you like to come up to the podium, please? And again, if you're pleased, state your name, and I didn't hear it.
Stephen Holston, 22, Mayor's line. Yeah, I'd like to talk about a few things. Of course, I'm a town, town, know that I was here about a month ago on the track, on my own, on COVID. You know, I appreciate y'all reaching out to Chris and Hacksaw about my health, but the person that hit me, they have no remorse. They went and cut. But of course, I couldn't get no tag on, I don't know. But- But, you know, I know y'all want to put your money where you need to, or where you have to, whatever, but I know that. But, you know, it would probably be helpful if we could put some cameras up on some places, especially some of these high-speed roads, streets. You know, it would help you out with catching people that's, it would help out with like your weather here, to look at a road, to see, and then per vos to see what needs to be cleared and stuff during a big storm or something, or other storms, summer storms, stuff like that. You know, if they were just with this podium right here, I wouldn't be here right now. That's how close it was. But Coover is dangerous, and it might not for a, for a tractor and a, and a big, you know, Ford F-350, big, like a big box truck or something. Old Spur is the same way. It's not, it's dangerous. You know, he curves, red road on stage, tuning is going to be tricky by my own, just anything. It's just dangerous out there. And, you know, we put up our signs, we, we go out every morning and, and go set our signs place to place. If we don't finish, we'll go the next morning and finish up, put our signs back up and finish. It's just, you know, and I know a lot of people that live here in town wants a beautiful, beautiful streets. But it's, it's kind of hard to do that when people fly out to down the streets and roads. And, you know, after it happened, mainly what went through my mind was Duck, like because I got killed out here on Fourth Street. I had to deal with it every day because I worked here at that time, and I was with Duck during that morning, and I told him, let me follow you going out Thousand Street and going out Fourth, when we get to the job. It was the week before July fourth. And he said, no, no, we got a lot, want to do is you go out there and get started and warm, I'll meet up with you. He never did. He never did. I didn't know what went on until my boss, Chris, people was come down there and talk. But I could have, I could have prevented that. And a long time when we go out to a, to a street or to a road, we, my buddy, right the tractor with, where they left me, he followed me in behind to Whittle's, slow traffic lane. There was several carpooling vehicles riding with me that day. They still don't know how people get from not taking it out. Just another, another thing I want to talk to you about was, you got a, going east on East Main Street, you got a turn lanes at East Main and Eleventh, going to like to cut on there at Eleventh Street, going to the other red light. From about, well, really our date, from about four to six o'clock or past six, you can't, if people's coming west on Main, the people can't turn, and then it backs up traffic all the way down to the lawhouse just about. We've done it before, we've took the, the straight area out and just made a turn lane. And we've put the only, only turn toward, they can turn only. But you need to have the red light hold the traffic on the west side and have a turn, have a turn area there so that the people can turn left, because you got it on the other side, on the west side.
So you're saying that we have it on the west side, but we need to put it on the east side as well?
Just keep it in that lane.
In that lane, okay.
In that lane, in that west lane.
Okay. I want to.
And that's what's probably for him, a lot of it's backed up, a lot of the headaches. Because I know during the times that I've come to where if I see it's backed up, I'll turn on another street and go home, like turn down Seventh or Fifth or something like that.
Okay.
I guess, I think that's better. And I didn't mean to take the podium time.
That's all right. Thank you for sharing all that. When that intersection is bad, I got creamed by a tractor trailer right there two months ago, so just about totaled my car and me. Thanks, I agree. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sorry, we're giving it a little moment.
No problem.
It's all right.
Not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Sorry, you know, we're sorry that you experienced what you experienced, and I think that we need to work together to maybe look into some processes, get some estimates, and maybe put some cameras up for their safety, for the safety of our employees, that's important.
More about putting cameras in our truck. I believe.
Okay.
What you do, you know, they got any car or camera.
Okay.
You know, it's more about putting cameras in our truck.
Something that we can discuss, Mr. Freeman, we can maybe meet and discuss in a public, our public works, maybe. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, but we, we will do our best to try to come up with some solutions, so that you have better working conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Holston.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Stephen. Well, that's all that have wanted to talk to council during citizens' period. Then we'll move on with our agenda. And next is consideration of application from the With Arts Council and from the Millwall Theater to use the sidewalks on Main Street for an Apple Act of Festival Arts at the Crossroads event on Saturday, September twenty-third, 2023, from ten a.m. to four p.m. Not sure if there's any further information. Our manager. All right.
Good evening.
Assistant.
So you have two street closure requests in front of you. The first is ten A, as the mayor indicated, that is the September twenty-third event. It's a dual-sponsored event from the Millwald and from the With Arts Council, and the Safety and Events Committee did hear this item on August the first at their regular meeting and has recommended to the town council that you approve this application.
All right, so at this point, I will need a motion.
I see.
We have a motion to accept this as presented. Do we have a second? Second. Okay, a second, is there any further discussion? And none? All in favor, signify by say aye. As well, any opposed? That motion passes. Next is consideration of an application from the Withful Fire and Rescue Department for a rolling closure of Main Street for the annual Withful Fire Prevention Parade on Saturday, October fourteenth, 2023, from six p.m. to eight p.m.
Mayor Taylor and members of the council, this application was also heard at the Safety and Events Committee meeting on August the first, and they have recommended that you approve this rolling street closure.
Do I want in a motion?
I see.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? I hear none? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
As well, any opposed? All right, I'm sure that motion passes.
Yes, I do have a question, Ms. Crockett, I do have a question, but you can, you can sit down, I know you can sit down. I, I know I've mentioned this since we've got this program here, and you know probably what I want to suggest, but the only thing I don't like is having the sixty days prior. I know we've talked about working on a date because sometimes, not that people are behind, they just may know about it, but I would, I would like to see something done on this. I know I've mentioned it a couple of times. I know we have sixty days, but we're voting on something, I, I don't have a problem with voting on, because it's awesome things happening, but I do have a problem with this form. So I'd like to see something tweaked with the sixty days.
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy to remove that.
Just because, you know.
Yeah, we, we totally understand. In fact, you'll be reviewing the policy at the next meeting, and we actually took the sixty days out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crockett.
All right, next on the agenda is a request of the Willow Brook Jackson Umberger Homestead Museum Advisory Board to amend their rules for transaction of business to include the number of appointed board members from five to six, and to change the frequency of the meetings to by monthly.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. You do have in your packet a copy of the Willow Brook Jackson Umberger Homestead Museum Advisory Board's Rules for Transaction Business in there, should be page three on item ten C. It'll actually be numbered, page thirty-seven. You'll see two highlighted, I'll say phrases there, one switching the board membership consisting of eight to consisting of nine, and then the first bullet point where it says four, striking through that and making that five. This was a request that the town received from the Homestead Museum's Advisory Board. They believe that increasing the membership and the appointees from council will give them greater opportunities for volunteerism, a broader knowledge base, and just greater opportunities within the museum. And I think, other than that, the agenda info that you read makes it fairly self-explanatory.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So this will be a, I need a motion to accept as presented.
I see.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I hear none, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Atkins?
I'm sorry, Atkins, aye, I thought it was you, I'm sorry.
Aye, aye, you're right.
No.
Taylor, aye.
I'm sorry.
Johnson, aye.
All right, so that motion passes. Next is a consideration of resolution supporting a Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Project for the Monroe Street detour. I believe we have some information from Mr. Woods, the Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mayor. You should all have in your packet a copy of the, the map that VDOT provided us. They are proposing that during the construction on Monroe Street, that traffic be detoured between Fourth Street and Wesley Highway, and traffic would be shifted over a block to West Main Street. The, the larger portion of that section of Monroe Street would be open to local traffic only. The purpose of the detour so far back is to make sure that we don't have any stray eighteen-wheelers get up to Tenth Street and realize that then they can't make a turn down either one of those streets. VDOT requires that, since these are town main street, town maintained streets, that the town provide a resolution requesting that detour.
All right, so any questions for Mr. Woods? The resolution was in our packet. If there's no further questions, we will need a roll call vote again, and we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson. So, all right, we need a motion to approve.
A move that we approve this resolution to, to realign Wesley Highway and West Monroe Street.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All right, again, a roll call vote, start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
All right, that motion passes. Move onward, consider the request of the Withful Police Department to appropriate funds for asset forfeitures.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to read you a, a summary of what the request is, and this is adapted from some language provided by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. In November of 1990, the citizens of Virginia voted to adopt laws allowing local law enforcement agencies to benefit from the seizure of monies, property, and goods connected with the illegal distribution of narcotics. These laws made it possible for law enforcement agencies to receive the proceeds from the sale of items obtained in substantial connection with drug trafficking and to have forfeited to them certain seized items that could be used to promote law enforcement. Prior to the enactment of these laws, all money seized and received from the sale of the forfeited items were applied to the state's literary fund, but now law enforcement agencies can use these funds to their advantage. According to subsection nineteen point two dash three eighty-six point two-two of the Code of Virginia, all money and property used in substantial connection with the manufacture, sale, and distribution of an illegal narcotic can be seized by a law enforcement agency. Anything of value furnished or intended to be furnished in exchange for controlled substances can be seized. On occasion, the Withful Police Department seizes assets under the provision of this code and receives payment from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for them. Prior to the money being released for expenditure by the police department, the money must be appropriated by the governing body. Recently, the Withful Police Department received three thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents, and has requested that the council take action to appropriate the funds. This will allow the money to be used, and used and properly tracked for DCJS reporting purposes. It is my recommendation that the council take this action tonight. And your motion would just be to appropriate the three thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents to the police department's budget. And your motion would just be to appropriate the $3,194.10 to the police department's budget."
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I say aye.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Here are none. This would be a roll call vote. We'll start with Vice Mayor Patterson.
Patterson, yes.
Taylor, yes.
Atkins, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Thank you. Moving forward, consideration of approving the town applying for a grant through the Withland Foundation for a community bicycle safety grant.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. As I recently reported to all, the Withville Fire and Rescue Department submitted a grant request to the Withland Foundations in hopes of receiving funds to start a community bicycle safety program. If approved, the Fire and Rescue Department would partner with Withville Parks and Recreation to offer courses and training throughout the year to promote bicycle safety awareness and skills to both, and skills to the public. Both departments are enthusiastic about the potential collaboration and the service it will provide, particularly to the youth of the community. As a secondary benefit, this would allow the department to establish a bike team that could be deployed to ease the mobility of personnel during crowded public events. The grant application requests 80% of the estimated $12,000 in startup cost to cover the expense of four bicycles, a trailer, safety and safety equipment for instructors. The department would match the additional $2,400 from their existing budget. No additional monetary commitment is necessary at this time. It is estimated that ongoing program costs will be less than $1,000 annually. The Withland Foundation requires an action by the council to endorse the application. This is a very low cost proposition with safety benefits that will far outweigh the cost of implementation. It is my recommendation that you do this and endorse this application."
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman. Do I want to need a motion?
I say aye.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I hear none. This is a roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
And that passes. Next is a request for an allocation of $5,000 for the town's volunteer appreciation event scheduled for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, from 6 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Withville Meeting Center.
Thank you. Once again. Okay, so this evening, I am pleased to report that staff has identified Tuesday, October 24th, as a volunteer appreciation event. Event will be held at the Meeting Center from 6 to 7:30 p.m. And so each of you will save the date. We will send out invitations as soon as possible. We are currently working with department heads to schedule several activities, including an opening address for members of council, door prizes, slideshow highlighting the work of our volunteers, and speeches from key department heads. We hope that we can do a resolution or a certificate of appreciation for each of our volunteers, the important work that they do for the town. To encourage people to attend, we felt it would be a nice approach to allow each volunteer to bring a person with them. The invitation would be a volunteer plus one approach. There are over 200 town volunteers. If we add the plus one, initial cost estimates for heavy appetizers and non-alcoholic drinks is in the $4,800 range. And so I am here tonight to request a not to exceed budget of $5,000 so that staff can begin working on this event. Do you have any questions? I am very concerned that you may have.
Elaine, how hard would it be to get a head count for that particular event? I'd hate to fix food for 400 and 150 show up. Is there any, is there any way we could get a head count prior to?
Yes, ma'am. We can certainly do an RSVP process. I'm happy to head that up. You know, essentially, the 5,000 would be a not to exceed budget, but we anticipate that the actual budget would be much less. It's just in order to draft the invitations and put on there what we're going to be offering as part of the event, we just need to know a not to exceed budget.
Well, a lot of our programs wouldn't be successful if it were not for volunteers. And I like the idea. I'm just a little bit concerned about, a little bit about pricing. But I think if we get a head count, that'll help.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And before we go on vote, I did want to thank Councilwoman Atkins. She's the one that steerheaded this with the volunteers, and I really appreciate that.
And I appreciate your hard work as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Holton. Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Any other questions? All right, so consideration by town council to allocate the funds. Will we need a motion?
Say aye, Mayor Taylor, please.
Motion. Do we have a second?
I say aye.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? This would be a roll call vote. We'll start with Vice Mayor Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
So that motion passes. Moving forward, consideration of the reappointments of Ms. Gay Hawkins and Mr. Tommy Hunley to the Withville Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Their terms expire September 8th, 2023.
Mayor Taylor, I think that pretty well says it all. These are reappointments that will expire in about a month, and both have indicated that they would like to serve and are eligible to do so.
So we will need a motion?
I say aye.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor Taylor, I do have a question, since I do serve on that. Is it okay if I vote?
I believe it is.
Yes, thank you. Just want to make sure.
All right, any other discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by say aye. As well, any opposed? I hear none. That motion passes. Next is a consideration, the reappointment of Mr. John Jones Jr. to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Term expires September 10th, 2023. And pretty much the same.
Pretty much a repeat, Mayor Taylor. Mr. Jones currently serves on the BZA. His term will expire in September. He is eligible and has indicated a willingness to serve if reappointed.
All right, do we need a motion, please?
A move that we reappoint John Jones to the Withville Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
It's a five-year term.
Five-year term. Okay.
Sir? No further discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? None. That motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Tree Advisory Committee. Term expires May 14th, 2027.
Okay, Mayor Taylor. You do have in your packet an application that the council has received from Mr. James Cohen for consideration of his appointment to the Tree Advisory Committee. The appointment is a four-year term, and it expires on May 14th, 2027.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I say aye.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I will say he has attended some of the, at least one of their meetings that I know of, to make sure this is something that he wanted. So at this point, we'll go ahead and vote. Need a motion? Do we have a motion and a second? Sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion carries, and congratulations. Next is a consideration of a youth appointment to the Withville Recreation Commission. Term expires August 1st, 2023.
Mayor Taylor, you do have in your packet, and Mayor Council, you do have in your packet an application from a candidate as the youth member, as Ms. Mittens' appointment does expire. If you all would like us to set up a meeting greet session with the candidate, we'll be happy to do so. If you don't feel like that's necessary, we can, I guess, potentially move forward with an appointment of that member tonight.
Thank you, sir. Need a motion?
A move that we appoint, is it Ms. Cohen? Ms. Cohen to the Recreation Commission.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And before we vote, I'm hearing that we do not need to interview this high school student. So, do I have any further discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Congratulations as well. Next is to schedule a work session for 4 p.m. for August 28th, 2023, prior to the town council meeting to discuss the draft town street closure policy. I will need a motion.
Oh, sorry. That's okay. Go ahead. And this one's pretty straightforward, so you're welcome to do that if you so choose. I just wanted to give a quick overview. At a previous meeting, I gave you all the first draft, the street closure policy. The Safety and Events Committee has been working on that for over a year now, and I did get some comments back. I did reflect some of those in the most recent version. So at tonight's meeting, what we need from you is just that you schedule a 4 p.m. work session for August the 28th so that we can discuss that in more detail.
Any questions for Ms. Holton? All need a motion?
A move that we schedule a work session for August 28th.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by say aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Under your business? Anything, just under there, here. Anything, skip to reports? That would be Mr. Town Manager, Mike Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to work through this rather quickly. As you all know, we do have a 6:30 vote session of interviews. So I'm going to work through this very quickly. Tourism professionals representing communities across Southwest Virginia gathered on August 15th during the Fourth Annual Celebrate Tourism Summit held at Withville Meeting Center. During the event, Friends of Southwest Virginia hosted the Southwest Virginia Tourism Awards Ceremony to celebrate the outstanding work within the tourism industry in Southwest Virginia. In recognition of the incredible work and contributions in advancing the Southwest Virginia tourism industry, Friends of Southwest Virginia presented 38 awards in a number of categories that reflected tourism marketing, visitor services, special events, and tourism leadership. The Tourism Awards were open to tourism organizations, tourism and economic development individuals, and tourism-related businesses within the 19 counties and four independent cities in Southwest Virginia. At the awards luncheon, Visit Withville and its local business leaders took home multiple awards, including Best Visitor Guide, Best Long Video, Best Overall Destination Campaign, Outstanding Meeting Venue for Visions with More Than 25,000 Visitors, and that was for Withville Meeting Center. Outstanding Hotel of the Year was Trinkle Mansion Bed and Breakfast, and Outstanding One-Day Event was the Withville Wine Festival. So please join me in congratulating all those who received awards recently. Every year, the Virginia Department of Aviation conducts an inspection of the Mountain Empire Airport. This year, it was found that the markings on the runway and taxiway were in need of repainting. The state has agreed to pay for 80% of the $26,410 cost, leaving each of the member localities with a potential local share of just over $5,000. The airport is requesting that the four member jurisdictions split the cost equally at $1,320.50. After discussion with some of my colleagues, it is anticipated that the other member jurisdictions will agree to pay for this, and Mayor and Town Mayor has also already taken action to appropriate the funds. You do not need to take an action tonight. I just wanted to get this on your radar, and then we'll bring this up again for discussion on August 20th. At your request, and we've already covered that, so I'll skip it. Wanted to remind all the council members that there is an open house for the Rock House this Friday, August 18th, at 5 p.m. And you should have gotten an invitation for that, and I believe the RSVP deadline is now coming down, but just a reminder. We can probably get you in if you forgot to turn that in. There have been questions about what would happen with the old buses at Parks and Recreation once we get the new passenger van in. We just want to let you know that those would be surplus, and we'll find the best avenue to get the best pricing for them when we do so. I did check, and the new refuse truck has been ordered, and it is anticipated that we'll have that and have it available for service by January 20th. But that is a quick blast through.
All right, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings presented by Town Clerk Chair Corbin.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. The first upcoming meeting is the Withville Redevelopment and Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, August 16th, at 12 a.m. at the Housing Authority Office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, August 17th, at 10 a.m. at the Water Plant, Austenville. The Downtown Withville Incorporated meeting will be held on Monday, August 21st, at 5:30 p.m. at the Downtown Withville Office. And the Joint Industrial Development Authority will meet on Thursday, August 24th, at 3 p.m. here in the council chambers. The last one is, the next council work session will be held at 4 p.m. on Monday, August 28th, prior to the regularly scheduled town council meeting at 5 p.m. here in the council chambers.
Is that it? All right, now to other business update regarding the Fourth Street Civic Center lease agreement. The Town Manager, Holton.
Okay, great. I'm going to hand out some paperwork here, so I'm just going to sit here for the time being and give you a quick overview. Essentially, tonight, we, Town Manager Freeman and I, we would like to try to get things in front of you well in advance of you having to make a decision on it. We had discussed this at previous meetings. So for tonight, all I am doing is handing out these documents. There's no action needed tonight. I want you to be able to take this home, to read it, look through it. If you have any questions or concerns, let me know. As you all know, we have been working with the American Legion and the VFW on renewing the lease for the Fourth Street Civic Center. So that's the paperwork that you are getting is actually the draft. And so again, no action is needed tonight, but I did want to make sure that everyone received it, and that's why I wanted to pass it out tonight. So let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
While she does that, we're going to go ahead and jump into council member time for, because our time is getting short. I'll start with Vice Mayor Patterson.
Nothing at this time.
All right, I'll just go ahead and go next. I just, I want to report to council that we had a successful Southwest Virginia Mayor's Forum this past week that we potentially hosted, but yeah. And there were 30, about 36 mayors and then some other speakers and whatnot for probably a total of about 40, 40 people, and it was a very successful gathering. That's all I have, so. Councilwoman Atkins.
Write this down, Mr. Schoff, and I don't have anything at this time.
All right.
What you saying?
Prayers answered.
Sorry. I missed y'all last couple of weeks.
Councilwoman Atkins. I have nothing.
Double prayers answered.
In your packet, there's miscellaneous council committee reports, joint building firm information, Smithville County information, and other things. So we will be going into progress session. Paperwork here. Do we want a brief process before we go into the process? You're letting the council want a brief recess before we go into closed session. We are going to go into closed session. And the first is a closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, 8.7 point, consultation with legal counsel about possible litigation regarding clutter cases. Next would be, to follow that, is a closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, 8.1 point, to interview with candidate for town attorney position. Next would be closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, 837, discussion regarding acquisition and disposition of property used for public purpose requirements. And the last one would be closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, 82? 81?
Awesome.
And that covers the...
Concerning appointed personnel.
Right. I haven't... And then, so that's it. And then, next is a discussion for salary of town employees, which is 2.2-3711, 812. So, I will need a motion for all that, please.
Answer me.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, second, ring discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Aye. That motion passes. We are now in closed session. Do we go back to the other room?
I think so.
It is now necessary to reconvene into open session by stating that the town council now in the motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening the open session were discussed. So I need a motion?
As I move.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, hear none. We'll have a roll call vote and we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson. I guess we need a motion? That we had a motion?
Yes, ah.
Atkins, ah.
Taylor, ah.
Patterson, ah.
And we are now in open session. All right, not knowing that there's anything else on our agenda this evening, is that correct? All right, so we are adjourned.
Enter time.
I thought you called in some name.